Our Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay in our hand, and give us our trespasses, as we have created those who trespass against us. And lead us in the good continuation, deliver us from evil. The Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C on the agenda is approval of minutes from August 3, 2020, regular council meeting. In the absence of any objection or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, may I stand approved?
Sorry, Joe. I don't mean to interrupt, but I really can't hear what's going on at all. The microphone sounds like it's covered or something.
All right.
It's his mouth. It's covered.
Here, is that better?
I know that sounds funny, but I mean, overall, it just sounds like you guys are in an aquarium or something.
Okay.
Well, um.
They will try to start here, Lori, hold on a second.
Yeah, I'm not really sure. Lori, is it getting any better?
You sound loud and clear.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, good job, Joel. Do you know what you did?
No, I have no idea. It worked, though. That's what works.
You know exactly what you did.
Exactly. What he meant to say was, of course I know what I'm doing. Okay, item D is citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address council and something that is not on the agenda, please step forward. Seeing none, we will move on to item E, reports from council committees. E1 Electric Committee met on August 10, 2020. Lori?
Thank you, Council President. We approved the power supply cost adjustment factor for August 2020.
Thank you very much. E2 is Water Sewer Refuge Recycling and Letter Committee did not meet on August 10. E3 Municipal Properties Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee met on August 10, 2020, in executive session for economic development. No action was taken. And E4 Parks and Rec Committee did not meet tonight due to lack of agenda items. Move on to item G, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. G1 is Resolution Number 038-20, a resolution, amending Resolution Number 081-19, the city's yearly reoccurring cost legislation, and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, Joel?
Thank you for giving one moment here. I'll share the document on the screen for everybody. Okay, as we discussed at the last council meeting, there were a few adjustments, cleanup items that we needed for the yearly reoccurring cost legislation. I'll scroll down to each one of them. We removed Walter Drain Company. We added Dell Marketing, that was for servers, and we did, in the budget, we did upgrades to servers, however, we needed to do an additional upgrade to the police department server because of technical issues that they were having. So that's been added on there. And the Rizidex LLC, that's the golf course chemical company, they were removed because Target Specialty Products was added, change of name for the company. And lastly, we have Spangler Nathanson for outside legal counsel. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that will be moving on to second reads. Item H, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. H1 is Resolution Number 033-20, a resolution approving the addition of a $50,000 surcharge to the city. Let me back up. We'll make it only $50 surcharge to City of Napoleon, Ohio Employee Health Insurance Premiums, amending Resolution Number 073-19, and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Joel?
Thank you. Again, as we discussed last time, this is a continuation of the wellness program that we've had in place for the past few years, and covers 2021 and 2020 and 2021.
It seems like a pretty good deal, it's better than $50,000. Makes it sound a lot easier to take now.
That's what I call a surcharge.
It is, yeah. Any questions or comments? Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that will be moving on to third reads. Item H2 Resolution Number 035-20, a resolution authorizing and directing the Finance Director of the City of Napoleon to certify and file annual special assessments of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, with the County Auditor of Henry County for placement and collection on the 2020 tax duplicates payable in the year 2021, and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion?
A motion.
Start it. Thank you. Kelly?
Thank you. I do not have anything new to add other than to request suspension by the RSC. It's due the second Monday in September, honor before, but the county auditor likes to have it by the end of August, so to comply with the way he likes to have it, we would ask for suspension.
All right, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for suspension. Jeff?
Second.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll on suspension.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, Rox, please call the roll on the resolution.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yeah.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has passed on second read under suspension. Item H3 is Resolution Number 036-20, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor of Henry County for the 2020 tax duplicates payables in 2021, and declaring an emergency.
Take a motion.
Second. Okay, Kelly?
Thank you. I do not have anything to add for this one.
Any questions or comments?
Kelly, do you need suspension on this one?
No, we can wait until the first meeting in September.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that one will move on to third read. Item H4 Resolution Number 037-20, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to apply for and accept Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and Local Transportation Improvement Program funds for projects deemed necessary by the city engineer in the year 2020, and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Joel?
Thank you. This legislation allows us to apply for funds with OPWC.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item I. I1 is Ordinance Number 032-20, an ordinance approving current June 2020 replacement pages to the City of Napoleon codified ordinances. Have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay, Joel?
That was the final read, nothing new to add from the previous meetings.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has passed on third read. Moving on to item J. Good as city. J1 Discussion or Action Approval of Power Supply Cost Adjustment Factor for August 2020 as Power Supply Cost Adjustment Three Month Average Factor 0.02777, and JV2 0.018603. Joel?
Thank you. This, obviously, you can tell that the power supply cost adjustment factor, three month rolling average, went down compared to the previous months. Now, the previous month, we did add $100,000, so that number was a little bit lower, 0.028. But the, overall, we're trending in the right direction for normalization. When next month comes, next three month rolling average comes out, the April usage month will fall off that three month rolling average. So we'll have June and July, which were both high usage months, and May, which was a low usage month. So slowly getting back to the normal three month rolling averages that we had in the past. That is it.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments regarding this? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
So moved.
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Lori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Okay, that has been approved. Moving on to item J2, Discussion or Action Application for Liquor Permit for, is it Gracies?
Gracies.
Gracies?
Taqueria.
Taqueria LLC, 814 North Perry Street.
All right. So this is the notice that we get from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. This is the notice to the legislative authority for a new permit for Gracies Taqueria. This is the, I guess, we'd call it the final D5 permit that we have available from the, from the former Brick and Brew. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Al sold that liquor permit elsewhere, and that the next in line to get a D5 permit was Gracies. So this is the old town tap. What they are requesting is an approval for this permit. We're requesting that we do not request a hearing. Let me see on this checkbox here, so we can respond to that appropriately, if that's okay with council, so that we can move this back to Division of Liquor Control and they can move on and get their permit.
What is the plan for this establishment, like how soon?
As far as I know, they're working on the building. I'm not really sure what their timetable is.
I was gonna say, the owner's been in West Virginia working for the last three weeks, so I haven't seen him. I usually try to talk to him every day, but he hasn't been around.
So they're the next one on the list for the D5, and it's, just seeking either approval for not requesting a hearing or requesting a hearing.
I guess I would like to have a little bit more information as to when it would open. I mean, if that's the last one we have, I understand, I don't understand exactly how it works, they're the next one in line. What if for some reason they're not gonna open for five years from now? And then they have the last one, if somebody else wanted it, would they have to purchase it from them, or?
Well, they, they're the next in line, so they, they hold and control that.
Even if they decide they never want to open, they just would get the permit?
There's a limit to how long they can hold it without being open.
Okay. Do you have any idea off the top of your head?
Gosh, I say, I wanna say the Brick and Brew was closed for how long before they sold it?
At least two.
It was either two or three years. So there's, there's a time limit where you can't just sit on them and hold them hostage. And they have to pay those, that fee to the state every year to hold that permit.
Right, okay.
Not only that, but we also since the establishment of the revitalization district officially with the state, and we got the permit from, permit application from the Brick and Brew, and we did the approval previously in that district, and we'll go into the, into the next line item here. It's a different, it's a different permit.
But they'll be more available.
It's technically a D5L. So anybody that wants to open up in this district can apply for those D5Ls.
Okay. And I guess if, we do review these each year anyway, so if there's nothing going on with that establishment in a year or two years, then we could always revoke that or not approve it again. Is that correct?
Like you said, he's been out, but it's a couple aguilas. I mean, there's no secret there. And last I heard, they would, were hopeful to open within three months.
Okay.
But I, I don't, I'm just going off of their statements.
Right.
You know, it hasn't been open in however long. I believe prior to this, them being on the list for this permit, they had a beer and a wine, say, so they kinda cobbled a few together, but then they've, just going with the D5 permit, which covers everything and allows us to stay open until 2 a.m. So that's the long and the short of it.
Right.
But since they're at the next, on the list, there's, there's a line, there's an application line, and Brian can tell you all about it.
Right.
Because he's been waiting in line for that, so they're, they're the next one, that's in line for us, so it's.
Do you know what the hearing would consist of? Who would, who would do the hearing? Is that the state, or?
It's a, you know, in the, you know, it's, it's up to the legislative authority to have it in the county seat or in Columbus. And if not, then you waive the public hearing request, and they move on and move on to the next step, so.
Do we need a motion for this?
Yeah, yes.
I'll make a motion that we do not need to request a hearing.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yep, go ahead, Billy.
So it's, it's becoming increasingly difficult to hear Joe's mic, he's in and out. I'm not sure I caught all of the conversation, but I was, I was trying to catch it. As far as these licenses go, silence is acceptance. We don't, there's no motion needed for two or three. Simply, I agree, remain silent and move on. As far as objecting, I've not done this research, I was not expecting this to be a topic of conversation, but I'm going to imagine that there will need to be some basis for objecting, likely in the statutes themselves. If council is interested, I can certainly do the research on that, find out what basis we would need to cite in order to object or to request a hearing in these, in these matters. But again, it's something, both those, both those topics, Joe's mic, and if you plan on accepting it, silence is enough.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, so at, at times I hear you just fine, and then the conversation keeps going, and then I go out. I don't know how else to describe it better than that.
Okay, thank you. I think all my questions were answered, and I'm okay with it. So if there's no other questions or comments, okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to item J3, Discussion or Action Application for Liquor Permit Property Preppers LLC, DBA Brick and Brew, 631 North Perry Street.
Oh, there it is, okay. Sorry, yeah, I was going back down through the last one, and there's the, you can see that it's the aguilas.
Okay.
And this one, we have Brian Top here for the Brick and Brew, Perry Street. And if you, you know, just scrolling back up to the first one, here's the, it's a D5 permit class, and because of the revitalization district, they are applying for our first D5L, which has added a number of permits to the revitalization district area. So again, same thing as the last one, just no, no action needed unless. If there's any questions, Brian's here.
I would say, since Brian's here, if you wanna give us an update?
Yes, I would. So.
Wait, wait, wait. Tell us who you are and where you live there, Brian.
Okay, I'm Brian.
There's a sheet right there, isn't there? A sign and sheet?
Sign and sheet, oh, yes.
Yeah, you'll do that first for us?
Okay, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I'm Brian Top from Brick and Brew. I live here in Napoleon. We're on Glenwood, right across from the St. Paul Church. And basically, give you guys an update, just to clarify everything. So the D5 is a liquor license that's been established for decades in Napoleon, and it's a, it's the normal, regular liquor license that they allot for the county. The D5L was part of the downtown revitalization, which actually opened up five more D5 licenses for downtown revitalization. We applied for the first one, and they cashed our check on the ninth, so we're hoping that that's moving forward. Yes, and, so, you know, there's no conflict as far as the old town tap having a D5. You know, I think we may be open before them. We actually have one side of the property in the kitchen ready to go. We just gotta get our, our occupancy, and then we'll be open for business. So that can happen literally any day. And the other side is coming right along. We now have a floor. There's not a hole in the old Brick and Brew anymore. And I would like to give a shout out to Jason Mazel, and Joel Mazer, and Amanda Griffith has really been a lot of help. She put me in contact with Delete Maida, very nice fellow down there in Cincinnati that takes care of liquor control and the licensing, and he actually put me in touch with Cynthia Lewis, who is the lady who approves the new liquor licenses. So we've had good contact and good communication, and they're, under their circumstances because of COVID, they have employees that are not safe to come into work, and they're not allowed to hire anybody. So they're, they're working with what they have to get this through, and I've been really happy with the communication and the efforts they've put forth through that.
It's been a track.
Yeah, it's, it's an ongoing thing, but with everything going on, I will say, we're looking to, we're trying to innovate also. We're, with, with all the new health precautions and, and the things we have to change in our lifestyles because of this, you know, we're, we are looking at different innovations, and, and it's not really a holdup, but it's, it's something that we are investigating to see if there's any other technologies or different way of doing things, different business practice to accommodate our current situation. Essentially, we wanna be the happy place, you know, we're, there's a lot of stuff going on here that's got people, you know, in the, in the down and out, and the doom and gloom phase, and, you know, we, we wanna do everything we can to be safe and still have a little bit of fun.
Great.
You know, I, I'll also say that Buckeye Lumber's been great. They've supplied us with really good materials at reasonable costs. My father-in-law, Carlin Sonenberg, stepped up and helped out with the renovations also, and we've been moving along really good at a good pace and doing things right. I think everybody's really gonna like the outcome, you know? So that's, that's really all I have to add. So I hope I clarified anything, and if anybody's got any questions, I'm certainly open to answer anything I can.
Well, great, thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Forgot to give a shout out to Clayton and the fire crews for putting the fire out well enough to be able to save that.
I have thanked him.
Yeah. Oh, thanks for your commitment to the community and your investment, because that's a, that's no small task.
It's not. It's a little more than what I thought it was, but it's not too much that I couldn't handle it.
I've seen some floor paintings scrolling through Facebook where it looks like an illusion of a big hole. You think about doing that for the floor in there just to kinda capture that?
Yeah, well, it's not an illusion, that was real. There was really a hole there.
Right.
Yeah. But it's, we, it's nice to have that cleaned up in there, and, you know, the, the visual's a little better. I look forward to working with the CIC and the, the, you know, the Downtown Preservation Committee, because they're gonna help us out with that outside display.
Good.
We've got plans that are already approved, both through the permitting and through the Preservation Committee, so it's just a matter of moving forward and getting a little more funding, because we are, that's gonna be a little, something that's an extra cost that we didn't account for, so.
Right.
We're, we're moving forward, though, and it's coming at a pretty good tick.
Good, great, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
No, no pressure, but when are you gonna open?
It's up in the air right now. We're open October.
All right.
We got a COVID.
And like I say.
COVID grand opening, you know, it's kinda hard, you know?
And it's like I say, it's, it's, we have that one side ready to go, and when it's a, when everybody's, it's accommodatable for the, you know, Mike Rudy and Tom Zimmerman to get in there and give the approval, and then we have to have the Health Department in there yet. And they've made a couple of trips over to give us some suggestions for our innovations that we're trying to do to, to make sure we comply and get ahead of it.
Right.
Yep.
Great, thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, move on to item J4, Discussion or Action Results from the reciprocity survey.
Hey, thanks a lot, take care.
Joel?
Hey, thank you. Okay, so we were asked at one point to see if we could put something up to just kinda get a survey, if, see if we, you know, to kinda take the temperature and what's going on. So we have the survey results from a few months ago. It was. So we have the survey results from a few months ago. It was up for a few months. Just a couple of things to keep in mind, only a small sample of the population took the survey. It's all done online, so we didn't get all, even city residents. It was only posted on Facebook. That limits, you know, people that don't use social media or other online resources. There wasn't a way for us to, you know, check the results either, to make sure that they were validated or anything like that. It's not like, you know, we're running a full-blown election here with the election board, so. And then, you know, with COVID-19, I'm not sure how many people are going to be really committal to having an actual public meeting. So I don't know if you wanted to go over the, you know, recap of some of the things that we talked about or not, but just that, you know, it's about reciprocity, recommending to adjust it to 50% from 100% credit. You know, looking at it would generate somewhere around $392,000 a year with COVID. We're not really sure. You also have the recreation fund split that's incorporated in that, so. Residents does it affect, you know, probably around 2,100. That's because, you know, the 2,600 count that we have, some people are double or triple counted, depending on where they work and how many jobs they have. It's an estimated $7.50 per $1,000 of income for those that are affected. Wasn't planning on going through each one of these bullet points, but for one firefighter, one part-timer overnight, full-time dispatcher, capital funds for roads, and then any additional would go into, in the operating side, would go into the general fund reserve balance. And then a note here for COVID-19 and what's going on. Kelly sent out, and this was in the OML notice, but the National League of Cities put out a, if anybody wants this, there's a full report on this, but National League of Cities has put out a report and findings of the cities in America, towns and villages, and, and the, you know, financial health of them due to the pandemic, and how, how it impacts cities, villages, incorporated areas. And just a lot of the stuff that we had covered before, so. Now, the survey results. We had total response of 162. Amount of people that were affected that filled out the survey was about 90, so a little bit more than those that were not affected. You live inside of the city, but have a primary employment, and another city that collects income tax, 90 yes, 72 no. They were reducing the rest party tax credit fund, police and fighter personnel, by also general fund budget and road projects. 90 no, 61 yes, 11 undecided. So it really, it matches, you know, those that live inside the city and see the numbers kind of, kind of match up to, you know, people that aren't in favor of it with. Those that are affected. So just to go through, though, the, we did put in a lot of areas for people to comment. So we just kind of put in here some of the general comments. A lot of the comments that we have in the undecided column were, you know, not sure, what about, you know, 75% credit instead of 50%? What about, you know, not 100% for it, but not 100% against it? Need more details, you know, things like that. It's just, we're not really sure. Some reported living in Napoleon and paying income tax to another community. You know, again, it's, it's kind of hard to capture all of the, all of the data with a small pool like this, but there you can see kind of how some of the numbers are staggering. Those that are against it, the majority of them, you know, live outside of the city and work in another community, so they would be affected by it. And just a note that there are more people that, with the facts, that voted. So if it affects you, you have to pay more. More people came out and voted against it, that affects. And that's actually the smaller portion of the population out of the total population in Napoleon. So that's kind of where, where it's drawing from. Reported living in Napoleon and not paying income tax in another community, so those that really aren't affected by it. A majority were in support, some were against, and a few undecideds. Again, this has to do with the public meeting. Would you do it? Some yes, virtually yes, a lot of them were no's, and a few others. So over 50% of them said yes in someone's favor. Here's the other comments about whether or not, why they would, you know, possibly, maybe. Depends on availability, if scheduled permits, you know, things like that, so. That was, that's kind of a brief rundown of the, of the survey results. So, you know, overall, you know, I think we got the, I, I really think we, I'm actually personally a little more surprised that we got more responses from people that were in favor of it that, you know, weren't necessarily directly affected. In fact, I was expecting a few more people that were, that it did directly affect that would come out against it, so. But the numbers are pretty, pretty close to, if it affects you, you're against it, right? Something that's, that's really how we should have got it. But I don't know if you wanted to go over it or have any questions about these, this data specifically, or or not right now. And then the other, the, the next step would be is, you know, where do we go from here with the conversation? You know, I think at some point, I think it's in everybody's best interest that we get some kind of closure on, you know, where this is going from one way or another, so. Whether that's, you know, do we have a virtual public meeting? You know, maybe limited, very, very limited access to people showing up, or is this enough data to make a decision, or, you know, how do you want to proceed? So I guess to get, to put a, to put an answer to it, you know, because budget time is coming around here pretty quick. And looking at, you know, our forecasting for our financial situation. I think everybody saw that the City of Defiance reported that there is 7.2% down projected for the remainder of the year. It's really not a, it's kind of still a shot in the dark, but in September, we'll have third quarters income tax collections, and we should have better numbers and better projections going into the end of the year. So I think it'd be noteworthy to have a discussion, either with Finance and Budget Committee in September, and then at the first council meeting in October, to kind of look at the financial picture, if that helps. You know, helps this, this aspect going forward. Not trying to tie the two together, but I think it helps provide clarity to some of the unanswered questions we've been going through, so. If anybody has any thoughts or questions, or if that's it, then we can move on to the next item.
Well, my, my opinion is we can't drag, I would agree, we can't drag this on forever. We have to come up with a decision. And if we tried to have a virtual meeting, we might get less of a response than we've got, to be honest, with what we have here on, on Facebook. And, you know, I think if we had a real public forum, still, I don't know if we'd draw in over 100 people. But I do know we need to make some kind of decision and a, and a plan to, if you like to say, refer to Finance and Budget. One question I had is, is temporary, I don't know if this is through COVID, for a temporary staff for the Fire Department? What exactly was involved in that again, and how long would that last? You know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah, the temporary employee staffing levels. Well, for now, with the CARES Act funding and FEMA funds, it goes through the December 31st, or December 30th.
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 Well, relevant for four months.
Yeah. Unless they do some other funding package or extend the timeframe in which the funds could be used. Don't know that yet, so. That's the, one of the unknowns is CARES Act funding and future funding sources for COVID-related expenses. In particular, as the National League of Cities in this report put out, what's COVID-19 impact on tax sources, you know, that's one of the, one of the sections in the full report. This is just the summary, two-page summary here, so. But there's, there's, you know, more information to be coming out, and we'll know more by September, and we'll put together our best projections going into the end of the year as we get into budget time.
And I know, staff-wise, I know it's needed, both Police Department and what's the Fire Department. But I do think, and Mr. President, not to throw something into your committee, but I think maybe the Finance, because of COVID, the Finance Committee needs to look at this in September, so we can bring a close one way or the other by early October. That's my opinion.
That's fine with me. We can put it on the Finance and Budget Committee meeting in September. See where it goes from there.
I think we need to do, we can't just keep dragging it out.
Right.
I got a couple of questions. Did this start in a committee originally?
Safety and Human, yep.
Safety and Human Resources.
Okay. Would either of the chiefs care to share their perspective on the results?
I'll share mine. So for the results to last as long as they, you know, that it was up on Facebook, the population that we do serve, majority of the time, doesn't have Facebook, so you may get a little bit different results there. I do think that it's really hard to put a lot of weight into what the survey says, and the reason why is because of just so limited amount of people that actually responded. I would have thought that there would have been a lot more responses of individuals getting out and against it and sharing it like crazy and that, but we just didn't have that. And it did make it to some of those real popular sites of Napoleon, and there really wasn't a lot of negativity that came from that. And I do think that they truly see us out there, you know, doing it every single day and, and doing it a lot. And so when it started in Safety and Human Resources, being that it started as where the need was proven, I guess it, it makes me real nervous on the fact of the financial end, because I sat in front of Finance and Budget last year and took a $42,000 decrease in the operating budget, and we've made it work. But I also stand in front of you today, losing another firefighter that's about to hit four years, going on five years, because he makes the comment, "I can't be out on an island." And so it's my job to stand up here and fight for whatever I can fight for, so we can get this right, because I'm going to continue to lose people, and we're not going to be able to recruit people. If they, if we have this reputation that we, we don't have enough people, then in the service, you can go next door. And you can go next door and make the same amount of money and have just as many people. So it's, it's been a real challenge over the last, you know, say, month. This is, and I'm emotional a little bit just because this is the first employee I've lost underneath my wing that I've taken a hurt to it. And, and I feel like it's something that's not out of my control, but not, nothing that's not been appreciative of the conversation. We've had a couple of incidences here. We've been just crazy busy over the weekend. And so we're tracking just about 17 calls below what we were last year. And that's, that's saying something, because we did about two weeks, right when COVID started, of not really doing many calls at all. And so once that scare kind of wore off, you know, it's been ramped up. And now we're seeing the influx, a lot of COVID patients, and, and so what we're asking, not only the job has changed for these people, because it's changed tremendously. We ask, that's why it's so important even more now than ever, and why the CARES Act fund was needed and greatly appreciative to have the staff, because there are so many times that in the middle of the night that you get to the hospital and you have a second call, and you're able to get the patient off, put them in the bed, and go to the next call. We can't do that anymore, because you can't take the dirty truck to the next call. You have to be able to decon it. You have to put all the policy, you know, all the procedures in before you can go to the next call, so we're not the cause of any cross-contamination. So that's been, that's been a, will be a great relief, and what I look at as the CARES thing, to be a Band-Aid. So very fortunate for that to come up, but to be a Band-Aid till December 30th. Now, it leaves optimist, all my people are optimistic that something's going to happen, and gives them a little hope for what's going to be in the future, but, but we, we are busy. And, you know, 3:00 in the morning the other night, we have a single-vehicle motor vehicle accident. And there was, somebody needed to be extricated, no engine. So the individuals, there was two people that responded, but they, very new on probation, not approved to drive the fire engine. So when they came in, got the ambulance, the captain then had to bring the other ambulance back to the station to get the engine to go back out there, so they could actually get the person out of the vehicle. So we're making it work, but, but we would like some closure either way, is what I guess we're asking for, too, whatever. I, I feel like myself personally is a pretty conservative person and wouldn't stand up here asking you for something that we truly didn't need. But I do know that the impact is going to be there with, with COVID as well, being that this is a directly relation, and where we, where we are funded out of the general fund being directly related out of, you know, the income tax. So it also makes me nervous on that end, too, just also on the operating budget of what we, what we took in the hits without COVID, and then what that expectation is going to be next year, is how do we figure out a way to make this all work to continue to provide the services to the citizens? And I, and, and we, we have explored, I think, every option, you know, every doable option that would be, you know, possible, so. But I am open any day, anytime, for any questions, if you need any clarification or anything like that, but I'd be glad to, glad to help.
Perfect. Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Do you want to hear?
Why not?
Um, you know, I echo basically what Chief O'Brien says. I mean, the need is definitely there. I've shared that with you and that type of thing. For us, we were equally as busy over the weekend, you know, simple animal getting into the right power line causes havoc for three-quarters of the city or more. You know, for us, that's a big deal. That was during a time that we probably would have had a second dispatcher typically, under a six-person schedule. Not no indications and that type of thing. I don't want to play the what-if game, but, you know, that was one dispatcher situation. Our automated service took well over 100 calls. Our one person took over 100 calls, and there were calls going to the county that never got counted. So, you know, that's just one of those things that, for us, I, I agree with Chief. We just want to get some sort of closure. I am still losing people in dispatch. I will continue to lose people. They've, they've been, you know, eyes wide open coming in, and that's something we hear about a lot, is their schedules and how much they move. So other than that, I don't want to rehash what we've already talked about, you know, but I just wanted to basically show, show support what Chief O'Brien said and what Joel's, and what we've talked about. I'm equally open to any conversation or any other option. I just don't know what that option would be, but going forward, we're definitely both concerned in safety services and providing services, you know, post-COVID.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I think this question would be for Kelly possibly, but I'm just wondering if, if you've had any thought on, will there be any sort of change in the city's collection of taxes based on the work-from-home state that we're in right now?
Yeah, Kelly.
We are waiting to see if that's going to affect us. Joel sent
Joel sent around some information that he got from AMP the other day. We have a lot of people that are able to work still. It depends on what the schools are doing and that kind of thing that will affect us. So, we'll know more when we get the third quarter withholding in, on September 15th, so for the Finance and Budget meeting on the 27th of September, we'll be able to provide that information.
Good, thank you. Just curious.
Laurie, just so I'm clear on this, were you referring to the House bill that was, or the legislation that was introduced at the State House regarding commuter, the commuter rule?
Yes.
And additionally, there was a lawsuit against Columbus from a certain organization, I can't remember the name of the organization, about this specific issue, about the commuter rule, so.
Right.
I don't have, I don't have any updates on that either, on the status of it, but, but I think what you were asking was, would, would there be an impact on us if that commuter rule were, was, was changed?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do I explain what that is, Joel?
Hopefully for the good.
Just to assume everyone knows what that commuter rule is?
Yeah, so when you, what they're saying is, if you work from home, that's where you should pay your taxes at. And when this started, I remember we had this discussion at one of our meetings at one point, originally they said, "Well, everybody's, even if you're working from home, you're still paying your income tax to your primary place of employment." And that was stated, and then, and then later on, a lawsuit came out and said, "No, if you're working from home, that's where you pay your taxes." We have, we have different, you know, we have a lot of people that work in agencies here in Napoleon that live just outside of the city limits, that come in and work in Napoleon, but also, we have some people that work in other communities that are working from home too. So, I think it's, and all communities are going to be like that, where we'll have a little bit of a difference of, of, you know, what, what that, what that impact will be. So, I don't know if there's a good way to, to track that, is, is what I was getting to. I don't know if there's a good way to identify which individuals are, are paying taxes here. You know, it could be that they're, they have withholdings. And then, I'm not, I'm not really sure how to, how to separate that out. We've, we've talked about it internally, Kelly and I have, but we, we need a little more time to, to dive into that a little bit deeper, if we can. So, there's, see if there's a way to actually pinpoint for ourselves what our, what our impact would be. To give an answer right now would be desk work.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we will, we'll hold it on the agenda for the Finance and Budget meeting in September. Moving on to item J5, discussion or action acceptance of donations received by the Napoleon Police Department. Joel, or Chief?
Oh, you go ahead. Yeah, this is.
That's a good one. So, we did receive $200 cash donation from Point Auto Service Center for the officers. That's going to be moved to the school resource. I'm trying to think, I called off guard, I was writing down there. There's a $500.
Yep. Oh, sorry. Yep.
Yes, $500 that we received, and a letter of support that was included in your packet. That's going to be moved, actually, we're going to use that for our mobile repeater project that we, and tag that money with the grant money I received from Walmart. And that would allow us, that extra $500 actually allows us to finish purchasing another mobile repeater. So, by end of this year, we should have four of the seven vehicles, all with donations or grant money with mobile repeaters. That was two, right?
Yep.
Sorry.
That's okay.
A little off-guard now.
Thank you, Chief. Can I have a motion to accept the donation?
So moved. Second?
Okay, Rox, please call the roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Thank you to those donors. That's awesome. Okay, we'll go around the table here, and, but we start with Kelly today.
Thank you. For the August Finance and Budget Committee next week, I would like to have a meeting to discuss the 2021 proposed budget calendar, and also the 2021 debt payment. At this point, I am talking to our financial advisor and bond counsel about a possible refunding, which will save us a significant amount of money, so I will bring that up during that meeting as well, when I get more information. I just want to take a couple minutes to go over some of the numbers for the finances through July. So, the water for July compared to July of 19 to July of 18, we are up higher than July of, July of 18. We're about 332,000. For the sewer, we are also up through that period of time. For the electric, we are up over 2019, but we're down over 2018. But we've come out of the downward of the electric from the COVID at this point, it looks like. And for the sanitation, we're about the same at that point. If we look at the revenue versus expenses through July for the general fund, we were about 3.5 million for the revenue, and we're about 3.8 million for the expenditures, so we're down over the revenue of $301,000. If you look at the electric fund, just the main electric fund, it was about 9.7 million versus our expenses of about 9.68. So, we're over the revenue by about $37,000 at this point. For the water funds, we're about 2.1 million in revenue, and we're about 1.95 in expenditures, so we're over the revenue about 170,000 at this point. For the wastewater funds, our revenue was about 2.4 million collected through July, and we're about 3.2 million for expenditures, so we're under the revenue, about 742,000. Most of that has contributed to the transfer that were approved by council at the beginning of the year for the capital projects that we're doing, so that we have funding into the 521 funds. And then, for the sanitation fund, 560, we've spent, or we received about 533,000, and we've spent about 520,000, so we're about 13,000 to the positive at this point. So, I just wanted to provide a summary of it. In your packet, you have all the information comparing 2020 actual revenues and expenses, the income or balances for 19 to 20, the expenses 19 to 20, and the revenues 19 to 20. That's all.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, Laurie?
Just a quick congratulations to Chief O'Brien for his recent degree, college degree. That's a pretty amazing accomplishment, considering all that you're especially going through right now, so I just want to congratulate you on that. And just really liked that note to, to Chief Mack, and certainly well-deserved, and a lot of people that have that exact same feeling, so thank you. Thank you for all you've been doing.
Congratulations.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Okay, Molly?
Yes, I did get, the individual who reached out about the cell site sidewalks and approaches said she's very thankful for it being completed, and she's found it easier to get around. And I do have a couple other more people who are reaching out to me about the pool.
Yep.
They, they don't get the northwest signal, so they weren't able to see the article. So, I said, "There was an article in there."
Oh.
And it's primarily younger. I don't know if we want to revisit the idea of putting something on the social media.
Oh, okay. Yep, yep. As, as an update for you, they're finalizing the building design still, right now. Not to get into the detail, but there were complications with the staff and the engineering for personal issues that, that they had to deal with. So, there was, there was a little bit of a lull period there, and, but we are looking to get that bid out by, hopefully, this week. And, but I don't want that chat until they've been reviewing the designs, and it should be just about wrapped up, so we can get that, finally get that last piece out to bid. The pool contractor is actually already ordering parts and everything for the project, and it'll be starting as soon as they can get somebody to start excavating.
Yeah. Okay, start working. And I think even just kind of putting that out there, because I've shared personally the message with them that the pool, you know, the actual pool is a go-ahead, but they just have some questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Golf carts downtown. I don't know if our intent was to let them that time, but I seen that a couple weeks ago, and I got harassed, something fierce, and it happened. So, I called the law department and asked what, what the, what we decided. I got that information, and I talked to Chief, and there was really nothing in our ordinance or, or paperwork saying that they can't park downtown. I don't know if that's a good idea for us to be allowing something like that, because that is 108. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I was not for golf carts in the first place, but.
Well, they had to have all that safety stuff done, they have a license plate, and have all that safety checks done before they can even be on the city street, right?
Right.
Right. And once they're on the city street, if they want to park downtown, it's in that, it's in that reduced speed zone.
Right.
I said, I think we said not on 108 on Scott Street.
Right.
But I don't think we said anything about not being downtown, I don't think. That's where I remember it, now I may have went way off.
That's, that's the way, that's the way it is. I'm, I'm thinking, seeing that, I, I really don't think that's a very good idea myself, but I'm just passing on what my opinion is. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but.
How many, Chief, do you know how many moving vehicles have been inspected and licensed in Napoleon?
I can give you an inspection through our department. At the time I pulled the numbers for, for, Costco and Commodore was 10. And that doesn't mean that they're, you know, through the sheriff's office or that type of thing. I don't know if all 10 went and got licensed then, that would be my assumption, but not a known fact.
And they all passed?
Those ten did, yes.
Potentials that are out there, citywide?
Yeah, I, I'm just bringing something, I think it's a safety issue myself, but it's left up to the rest of you guys, but I just got a nasty feeling in the back of my head that something's going to happen to us.
Well, I guess if it was passed as it can be on the road, I, I don't think we'd be able to pick and choose, but you're not allowed to park on the street and park on these streets, but hopefully, they're all safe and.
I don't want to park on sidewalk.
No. No, they're parked, they're parked out in front of Shears, which.
Yeah.
I got emailed, "Come on, you gotta look at this. Come on, you guys, stop." I just wanted to bring it up, that I don't think it's a very good idea. But, like I said, that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jason?
Just congratulations to all the kids at the Henry County Fair, and all the volunteers, and all the people that helped put that on for the kids. And a lot of kids were anxious throughout the summer months trying to figure how that's going to work. Haven't seen anything negative come out about it, a lot of positives coming out about it that, you know, the four H's were able to, you know, show some of their animals and have kind of a positive, a positive part here of 2020, and hopefully, they can kind of use that kind of as a, hey, we can wear our masks, we can kind of do what we've got to do here, hopefully, can carry that on then to their, the school, and kind of keep that, that, kind of that forward momentum of wearing masks and socially distancing, and yet, kind of providing some sort of resemblance to, to what it should look like. I think we're all, you know, eagerly anticipating the announcement tomorrow from the governor about fall sports and kind of how that's going to figure out. And all the athletic directors, a week ago, got that email that says, you know, "Only play six games," and they all probably said the exact same thing, "What sticks are we going to play?" And to figure that out as quickly as they did, I thought was, was pretty good. So, there was a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes. Just appreciate everybody's hard work, and let's get back to, try to sort of get back to normal and, till we get this, this cure, get this stuff found, and keep working forward. And we're all wearing a mask here tonight, you know, we're not wearing it for ourselves, we're in for everybody else, and if that's what it takes, that's what it takes, so. Other than, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, sir. I just have two things. One, we hear a lot of good things about a lot of our departments here, either the fire or police, or electric and water, and don't hear too much about operations. With the project I did at home, I did need to contact operations, ask for some things, and one of the things to fill the pool, having a hose and having them come out to the fire hydrant close by the house. I made the call when I was at Rite Aid picking something up, and when I got home, it was already there. And, I mean, it was probably 15 minutes. And, and then when I called and said, "Hey, I'm finished with it," they were, they were there within an hour picking it up, and I don't think the operations department gets noticed as often as they should. I just want to point that out. And then, Chief Mack, I, I had a resident lives on Wood Lawn, left closer to the corner, the five-way corner there, noticing a lot more semi-trucks. I, you know, I live on Wood Lawn as well, I've noticed it, I mean, I'm not home that much, but I see them also. Just not, not sure if that's something with school starting up, if you can do maybe some extra patrols around there. I saw one actually, right before I was leaving the house, come here, he was pulled over at Glenwood, and I'm sure he was trying to figure out, "How do I turn around now?" And I know we've, we've asked ODOT to put some signs on the exit ramp before they commit and go over the overpass. There is that one sign that says, "No through trucks" until they.
Through the bridge.
Yeah, until they pass their entrance ramp to get back on 24 to go through the bypass. So, at St. Paul, it says, you know, "No truck turnaround, Glenwood, both ways, no trucks, Wood Lawn, no trucks." Well, I don't know if we can put another request out to ODOT, asking them to put a sign there. And, and there are multiple trucks that use it that know that they can't. Those are the ones that I wouldn't have a problem seeing them get cited. It's the ones that they don't know, and you can tell which ones those are, because they're trying every way possible to turn that thing around. That's all I have. Ken?
There's a house where there was a fire several years ago, and I think it's 822 Hobson Street, that's been boarded up, and nobody lives there, that's been sitting for a long time. Can there be something done about that?
It's in, it's in compliance with our property maintenance code or nuisance code. Not much, but. I'm just going to have to take a look. You said 822 Hobson?
I believe that's the number.
I think I know which one you're talking about, and I think they have a boarded-up window on the second floor, is that correct?
Yeah. Their main, whoever it is is maintaining the property, or else Kevin would be over there siding with the house, so. Property's being kept up, the code is, is as far as the nuisance code is, but I totally get what you're saying, is it's sitting there at home and.
Joel, would you, if you've got that address, and if Kevin can take some pictures, I'd like to see that, that'd be something we can do.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.
Anything else, Ken?
No, that's it.
Ross?
Nothing for me this evening, thank you.
Dan?
I see nothing on Safety and Resources' agenda for next week, is that correct? I see nothing on safety and resources agenda from next week. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. Chief, you have anything? Okay. Want to cancel that?
Yes, sir. That's all.
Okay, Billy?
I don't have anything tonight. I should have a litigation update for the next council meeting.
All right. Joel?
Any of you know Tom Denny? Tom Denny is a 34-year employee with the city of Napoleon, announced his retirement. Technically he's done by July 31st, but unbeknownst to me, his last day in the office is Friday, or last day of the job. He'll be burdensome time until the end of the month. So, you know, the electric group has a little, a couple things they're doing for him, trying to keep everybody distanced, but if you'd like to see Tom, he'll be in the building at the electric and operations building on Friday. If you ever get a chance to pop over there and say hello to him sometime during the day, there's enough space there where, you know, you can spread out. It's safe to be there as long as everybody's following the guidelines. So if you have a chance to pop in, please do. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I ain't missed anybody today. All right, moving on to, pardon?
Right. And then there was, because that didn't make it on here.
I want to know.
Okay. The American Road Award. We were going to request a special council meeting for this coming Monday. Is that right? Same as, I think, safety, or I'm sorry, finance budget meeting or meeting. So if we want to do it right before then, a few minutes before that or whenever you want to schedule it, but we're looking to have a special council meeting. I think we said that at the last special council meeting that we'd be looking to award on that. And I just want to make sure I get the date right. Is that the 24th, Monday, the 24th? Because bid's open this week and then that way, because there are different, you know, the cities involved and the commissioners also have to approve it because of the grant money associated with it, they would likely approve the award of the contract the very next day. And then you could lump that, that's, this is a lumped portion of the project. So.
A pleasure.
Would that be all right with council to schedule a special, would just be for one approval to award of the, of the contract? And if it's out, if it's 10% out of our budgeted estimate, we can't move forward, we'll notify it and cancel the meeting.
Okay. What time is the finance and budget? 6:30? You think that'd be about a 15-minute meeting, Joel?
If that.
If that?
Yeah.
So anyone opposed to a 6:15 meeting? Schedule for 6:15, please. Any other mulligans there, Joel?
No.
Okay. All right. So moving on to item L, approve payments of bills and approve financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, payments of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. Stand approved. Item M, adjournment. Could I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Hey, Rox?
Rox, please call and roll.
Laurie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.